Did we not get one of these before? Why was sitting here? Well. It's
Nice. I didn't mean to throw it at you. They want us to know.
Roger.
Leasing, now leasing. Yeah, they want to lease it. I guess they want us to know that this is here, huh?
Bad, I think.
They thought that they were doing like an Airbnb or something with the upstairs.
They do, they do.
Or the downstairs are leasing?
Yes, yes.
That's, yes. Nice prime business opportunity there for the right interested party maybe. Hey Dick. Ten deer from Peterson to my house.
What was that?
Ten deer.
Oh, really?
From Peterson to my house. In three different groups.
Keep them at your house.
Some are going by between, or by your yard. I shoot them.
Chief's gonna stand?
Apparently.
There's, uh, there's three seats there. He probably doesn't want to.
No, he don't want to be up front. Nobody wants to sit up front.
Church.
Everybody ready?
Sure, have at it.
Ready or not, it's time. And I'll just a couple of seconds. Yeah, you show up at the very last second, you get the front row, it looks like.
Yeah, what they get.
They're either gonna get the front row, or Chief's gonna go get some more chairs instead of putting them in the home.
Yeah. No, they're gonna take the front spot.
All right, at six o'clock, I call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
They moved in second, and any questions, comments? All those in favor of the agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Agenda's approved. Next is the consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and any comments?
Questions.
Questions, concerns?
I have some questions.
Yes.
On the accounts payable. Kinda is already answered for me, but I'll bring it up anyhow. Page one of five was Cobb Communications for an ad, and I wasn't sure what the ad was for. It's for the City of Whitehall to have an ad in the White Lake area visitors guide. So, you can probably pick these up down at the Chamber of Commerce, or I don't know if there's any here available in City Hall.
We have them here, and the Chamber, I think, produces 25,000 of those. Distributes some in Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, and Illinois. So, it's their annual, we've always advertised.
Okay. Next question, and still on the accounts payable, was page two of five for Lake Shore Chrysler for $14,000 for a transmission. Can you tell me what vehicle this is for?
Yep, that was our 2012 Ram pickup. It was transmission, exhaust, and tires, so.
That makes a little bit of difference.
You know, it's one of those, zip to the point where we scrap the truck and buy a new one, but 14 grand's a lot cheaper than the new truck, so. Hopefully with the new transmission, we can get another, well, that's a 10-year-old truck, maybe we'll get another 10 years out of it.
Okay, now, knowing that it included tires and exhaust, it makes it a little bit more reasonable. I just put a transmission in my truck, it's a 2007, and that was almost four grand, so I thought it was kinda high, but with other stuff, I understand. Page three of five, Shide's Plumbing for water lines. Is just the two that were listed in there, the only two that we did, or were there more than that?
Nope, we did six service lines, and again, this is the lead copper line replacement. And we had contracted with Shide to do them at $200 a living a foot, and, which is one of the best rates that we've seen out there, talking to some of the other communities. And one of them was over 300 feet, so, and they also ran into the sewer line and some underground cables, so that was a little more complicated. There's also a $570 bill in that payment for the furnace at DPW. That totally died, and we thought this time of year, it's probably nice of us to keep the guys here.
Yep, that's for sure. The only other thing I have that's not on the accounts payable is in, uh, the BLT minutes. We're under unfinished business, uh, that was voted on to pursue acquisition of property at the north end of Tannery Bay. What property is being looked at for acquisition?
That is, um, roughly, it's about an acre, plus or minus an acre. It's at the very northern end of the property owned by Tannery Bay. It would be, uh, right now, the discussion is north of Bush Creek. It's roughly an acre. The grant agreement with the state of Michigan and Eastbrook Homes, well, actually, the city, um, is that Eastbrook Homes had to provide public access to the waterfront. Their initial plan was a five-foot sidewalk, straight out to the water. Mr. McGraw from Eastbrook Homes and the Tiffle Board has been discussing acquiring an acre to be more of a public access versus just a sidewalk. That piece of property is about an acre. Mr. McGraw is gonna do all the clearing at his cost, uh, in accordance with the plan that we had drawn up by the Muskegon Conservation District. It is just under 300 feet of waterfront. The property line will be the center point of Bush Creek. There will be a restriction in the deed that neither property owner can do anything with Bush Creek without the others' written consent. So now you got a kind of a little double protection on preserving the creek. Mr. McGraw and Eastbrook Homes has all, have also offered to put $30,000 towards, uh, whatever development we want on that site. And when I say development, it's gonna be as natural as possible. And the Muskegon Community Foundation also has some grant funds, as well as the White Lake Community Fund, that could also assist in, you know, doing some, some walkways and some picnic tables down there.
So, is basically the property from the creek to the marina?
Yes.
I mean, in that general vicinity?
Yeah, and in fact, right now, there are some marina cradles and boats on that piece of property. Uh, part of the discussion with Mr. McGraw is that some sort of fencing would have to be put up to kind of say, you know, stop being a property that's not yours.
I thought somebody had said when we were talking about this about a year ago, when they proposed giving us the property, that, uh, Marina's property actually almost ended right at the, where the, there's a cement apron on the south end of their building?
I would have to look it up.
Yeah, I haven't seen a schematic of it or anything, but I just was curious about where, you know, where it was at and why we were looking at purchasing anything, because I thought Eastbrook Homes was supposed to be donating the property.
Well, they, they will be. There might be, I don't know if it'd be a full donation, or if it's the token dollar for the legal transaction, but basically, Eastbrook Homes will be donating it.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Consent agenda is approved. Next messages from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Scott, do you have anything you wanna?
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna cost me a dollar like it did at Rhodey today. We have a thing called happy dollars. Uh, I put a dollar in the bucket today, um, in recognition of our police department, as well as Central Dispatch, uh, the Muskegon County Sheriff's Department, the county's emergency response team, and the state police. Uh, you probably have all heard that we had an incident on Sunday that I think went as well as could be expected. Uh, there were no injuries or casualties involved, and we also had a very serious, uh, motorcycle vehicle accident last night, um, that, again, the state police and our police departments responded, as well as, I'm not sure who the emergency crew was.
White Lake was there.
White Lake ambulance.
And White Lake Fire.
And White Lake Fire. So with all of those, um, emergency services coming together and, uh, resulting in some very favorable outcomes, was very, very impressive. So, it was just kudos to the, to the men in blue, that, men and women, that took care of those situations.
Jeff?
Oh, we're at fire? Oh, I thought we were gonna do the appointment.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
You're getting eyeball from next door.
That would be you, Mr. Connell.
What?
Appointment.
Yeah.
For the Viking Athletic Center.
Right.
Do we need a, a motion, or?
It's, it's a very informal, um, committee that's getting together. It's all the communities that will be contributing towards the, um, operations of the Viking Athletic Center in terms of, uh, senior services, uh, but it probably wouldn't hurt to have a motion to support for the appointment.
Make that motion?
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no? Glad you didn't say no.
No, no.
Thank you.
I'm there every day, so.
All right. So, moving, moving on with. Counsel, do you have, do you have anything?
Right on the spot. Um, no, nothing tonight.
Uh, I would wanna ask if there's a way we could add to our, uh, website, city website, uh, some kind of a line about what roads we are proposing to repair for 2023. There was quite a bit of chatter on Facebook over the weekend about the condition of the roads and what roads were gonna be repaired, and I kinda chimed in a little bit, and then a lot more questions started getting asked, and I couldn't remember what all the roads were. So, if we could maybe post something on the website page that, you know, said what roads were proposing to do, at, at least.
Yep, we can do that.
That might satisfy some people. That's all I have.
Sure. I would just say, welcome to everybody that came to join us this evening, and, uh, I'm glad we had enough seats.
Mr. Connell?
I have nothing tonight, sir.
Steve?
I have nothing tonight.
Keith?
Nothing this evening?
All right. For myself, I think I will pass on that as well at this point. So, next up is public comment. I want to remind people that this is an opportunity for public comment. This isn't a opportunity to, to grill the council. If, uh, you're here with interest on the survey that was sent out about the, uh, potential zoning changes, that was a survey. It was looking for a consensus. At this point, there's no, no plans to make any decisions. The, the entire purpose of that was to spark conversation. By the amount of people that are here, I, I think we sparked some conversation, so. If there's, uh, anyone here that, uh, maybe wants to speak for the group, or if everyone wants to have their three minutes, we'll do that, but if, if everybody here is of the same mind, then do you have one person that could speak to that? So, at this point? Yes, please.
Ryan Regal, Pittkin Drug. I don't know if other people want to speak, but they do great, and that's why I'm here. I emailed all of you. I didn't know if I could make the February 7th Planning Commission meeting, if that's up in the air, if I can make it or not, so I thought, I gotta act now, if I can't make that meeting, I want to make sure my voice is heard and others are heard. Uh, get it out now and tell you what we gotta tell you. If you would give me, I, I would ask for maybe a three or four, five minutes, not three minutes, because there, there's one person that, um, just sent me an email, and she came down with COVID, but she'd like me to read her statement. May I do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I oppose the zone change. It's way too restrictive and makes it even more difficult to rent or sell our buildings. We will have more empty spots. Maybe instead of more restrictions, you should make it easier to start a business. Offer incentives instead of more restrictions. Offer free taxes for the first year for the type of businesses you would like to attract. Make the red tape with the city and the fire department not so complicated. Since I moved my business from 612 East Kobe to 219 East Kobe, I've had several business owners tell me they were going to open their business in Whitehall, but chose to go to a neighboring city due to all the strict and unnecessary regulations that our neighboring cities did not require. I hope by me saying this, I will not be reprimanded from the city or the fire department. Thank you for listening. Kimmy Conlon-Burgh, she opposes. She might not have sent that to you. There's another woman here, um, that would not like to speak. May I read it for her, please?
Please.
Thank you. City of Whitehall, and, and again, some people do not like to speak in public, that's why they sent me these. City of Whitehall, from Pam Sikkenga, proposed change in zoning ordinances. I'm writing this to express my concern with how this proposed zoning changes will affect my business. I've owned Hooked on Here at 105 South Meers Avenue. Hooked on Here has been in existence at this location since eight, 1989. I've been a co-owner and now the sole proprietor of this successful business. I have worked and supported this community all my life. It has required a monetary commitment and hard work and long hours. My salon is one of the businesses that are targeted under this new zoning order. Not only would it affect me, but also my customers. My customers also add to the economy by frequenting the town-to-town businesses during their visits to my salon. Should I be forced to relocate under this proposed order, it would be detrimental to my business since I cannot afford to set up my business elsewhere. I did not receive the letter from the City of Whitehall requesting opinion on this. I did not receive the letter from the City of Whitehall requesting opinion on this zoning change. Therefore, I want to make it known that I oppose this change. Okay. Now, can I have my three minutes, please? Yes, yes?
Okay.
Thank you. I've, I've emailed all of you, you know why I'm here. Like I said, I don't know if I can make that next meeting, uh, the zoning meeting, so that's why I thought this was sent out two, two weeks ago, yes, or tomorrow, so I thought we could, uh, address it tonight. I don't know how people feel about this. I'm sure we got a number of surveys back, I have no idea, but it's been out there two weeks, you probably got a, a very good idea where this is going with business owners as well as building owners. I want to, that one letter I want to address, too. The list of businesses that was, it was, this letter was sent to, I asked it to be sent to me. It was by the City of Brenda Sanz, thank you Brendan Scott for your help on this. So, I, that same day I got that list, two people contacted me. One was Hooked on Here, and one was 102 West Kobe across the street. They did not get one of these, and then I looked at the list the city sent to me, and those two businesses were, were not on that list. So, I don't know if you missed any other businesses, but Hooked on Here and 102 West Kobe were not on that list, so I don't know if you missed others, just FYI. Something, uh, a quick issue with this letter, uh, one of the things, uh, that third paragraph, you own property in the central business district. That's not true. Most of the people that got this letter do not own property in the central business district. What about fraud?
I think that's part of the reason why we're, we're asking to do a business registry, so we can know that. That's, that's part of that.
Okay, good, thank you. A little bit concerned about fraud. If 45 of these went out, what do you think, it's 60 back? Cause a lot of people don't sign, people can make, you can get 70 back. So, I'd be a little concerned about fraud, one way or the other. I could, I could mail five of these, and my sister-in-grandparents can mail 20 of them.
I think I, our clerk knows how many were sent out.
Yeah, I know, but you're not gonna get, you know, you're not gonna get a good answer.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, but stuffing the ballot box should be a concern here. If you wanna be accurate, I would say send us out with a, with a tax bill to the, uh, property owners. Stick on the tax bill. The property owners will respond. I'm not sure all property owners got this, cause a lot of times, if you run a place and you've got this, your property owner's not around. If you're a tenant, you might just eat six, the property owner might never see it, I don't know. Not all these are, obviously not all these that get sent back are signed by somewhere, or some aren't, obviously. Tenants versus landlords. Okay, one of my tenants is here, Steve Mayberry. So, what if he says he likes this idea, and I say, I don't like this idea? Whose vote counts? Right? I know it's who I think should count, the building owner, correct? I don't know how you're gonna decipher all that, but, um, so, whose vote counts? Tenants or landlords? His or mine?
The votes that count, uh, the votes that count are the votes of the, the planning commission first.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just questioning.
And, and, okay.
I understand you, but I think this has to be rethought a little bit.
Well.
Send another one out, that's all I'm saying. Okay, if, if the, if the building owner's votes are the ones that count, I oppose five times.
Okay.
Okay? I have, I oppose for 101 East Kobe, Northland Insurance. It's a commercial residential building, and it's got apartments above. I oppose for 101 West, I represent all these five pieces of property, I mean owner or representative. 101 West Kobe, Pittkin Drug, commercial building, I oppose. 105 West Kobe, posh by Pittkin, two apartments above, commercial building and a residential building. 107 West Kobe, Pittkin Sales Shop, commercial building, I oppose. 201 West Kobe. I'm trying to develop that piece of property with partners. And they see this, they don't get warm and fuzzy. Biggest, biggest investment ever in the downtown community. We're working on it. This does not make us feel warm and fuzzy.
Okay.
Those are my five oppositions.
I, I think you've had
If we look at this.
Enough time.
Pardon?
I think you've had enough time, we've, we've heard you.
I'd ask for three more minutes, please. Little latitude here, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, no, no?
Carry on, I mean.
Thank you.
You're, you're beating a dead horse here.
All right, I just wanna make my case. Two more minutes.
It's understood.
60% non-conforming. If this were to take, if that 60, roughly 60% of the businesses would be gone. PNC Bank would be gone, the church right next would be gone. Businesses that oppose this, that conform, I can name five right now, they oppose. Mileons conforms, Fetch con- conforms opposes, Pittkin conforms opposes, Bells conforms opposes, Poki Poki, General Store, both conform, all against. Feel like sometimes the city's taking two steps forward and one step back. We're just getting to the point where we're getting almost all these buildings full, and now we're coming up to this.
Okay, the, the city is making an attempt to get a consensus. That's what this is about. This is not an attempt to throw any businesses out, as you read by the letter. They're looking for your thoughts. There's, at this time, there is no plans for, to do any of this. I think everybody in this room wants to see a thriving business district. Is there anybody that doesn't want that? I don't think so. We all want that. This is an attempt to learn how we can do that.
Understood.
That's what this is.
I, I get.
So, this is not, we're, no one's shoving anything down anybody's throat or kicking anybody's business out. We, we, we hear you loud and clear.
Two more minutes, no?
What more are, do you have to say?
Uh, two more minutes, please. I feel sorry for Catch Mark and Coldwell Banker, who recently moved to the area. They wanted to move if they thought this was coming. Catch Mark put a lot of money into their building. Whitehall towns are licking their chops at this, at something like this, though. More people to the corridor, and we'll, we'll lose them, they'll go up there. Retail has changed in the last 20 years. I can do anything with this. Buy anywhere. I feel sorry, several owners couldn't make it tonight, Gary Jassics in Florida, I don't know if he, uh, he responded, but Tagon and Pittkin, I don't know if they responded to this, but they're out of town. Business owners are gonna say, this is too restricted, this is overreach. Help us or leave us alone. And this doesn't seem to help us. I agree, we need, don't get me wrong, I'm not against retail. We need, we need retail. We need a good mix of retail. We need cash incentives, not this. Give, give us a carrot, not a stick. Across the street from me, 102 West Kobe, 2,500 square feet for rent right now, probably the best spot in town. Sitting there empty. I mean, give some, put $10,000, city pays for first year's rent, cash incentive. I will help you on any committee, but this, folks, it's not the answer. It really isn't. This is not the answer, I'm sorry, but thank you for your time, and, and, sorry I got a little emotional, but this hits home to a lot of us here. And I, I guess I, you know what, everybody here, I don't know if you can really all come to this, you know what they're gonna say. I guess most, most, if not all, opposed to this being building owners or tenants, but thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Please.
My name is Steve Mayberry, I'm the owner of Northland Insurance Services, and, uh, this, this is the wrong way to go. First of all, the community should have something to help business owners. If I get Downtown Development Authority, you know, that would be more of a better use for your time and investigation than, than trying to figure out what kind of retail we want. Well, if you got retail you can support, and if you're not, if you don't have a DDA that's active in the area, it's kinda hard to support that. And it was one other issue too, that kind of mind was true. Ryan, did you want me to give my two minutes to you?
I'm done. Thank you.
But, but it's just, I mean, I've been in that location since the mid-eighties. And it's, I can't just move my business, because that's all part of, part of that downtown, being on the four corners. That's what makes it go. In every community I know of, that I've been in and experienced, there's a good mixture of services and retail. They work off each other. Services, retail, and residential in a community is the way that, I used to be on City Council of Montague at that time, you research back then, everything's going that way. I mean, it's a community, we're all, we're all in it together. It shouldn't be just one little area of retail and everybody else go fend for themselves.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Phil Patch, and my wife and I are on the, and from Patch Chiropractic Center. And we are a business and a building owner. We are opposed to the proposed downtown zoning changes. We believe that the proposed changes will not only hurt the targeted businesses, some of which have been here for fifty years or more. As chiropractors, we bring many people to the downtown Whitehall area from other communities to go out to eat or shop while in town. The vast majority of our patients do not live in Whitehall, and we feel that a mixture of service and retail mutually support each other and strengthen the city as a whole. The proposed zoning changes really make no sense to us. The majority of the downtown businesses would become non-conforming. Do you really think learning, growth, or power presence will encourage or support retail development? Just that term "non-conforming" feels kind of offensive. In the thirty-plus years that we've been practicing downtown Whitehall, we've seen many retail establishments come and go. Consequently, many buildings sat vacant for years. Have you considered that many of these non-conforming businesses would require major renovations? They're not set up for retail. In a town that is struggling to maintain and support retail, who's gonna pay for this? That being said, for you to tell us that we, what we can and cannot do with not only our building, but our business is kinda hard to believe. Mandating that we cannot make changes, expand, or even say sell our practice when we should decide to retire is punishing us. So now we would lose money as another building sits empty, and we have to pay the property taxes with no income, only wait for some mythical retailer to rent from us? This just seems crazy, upsetting, and, and wrong. So, we supported up the local social alcohol district, and that made sense to us, it seemed reasonable. But this proposed zoning change, we feel is misguided. We don't want our building to be held hostage by this short-sighted plan, and so we are strongly opposed to what we feel is a rather punitive and central zoning change. Thank you.
Is the, can, can you use the mic, microphone up here, so I think other people may have difficulty hearing? Is it, is it on?
I'm not even sure it's on.
I'm Chris Billy. I'm a resident, not a business owner, nine zero eight South Col, Circle. I moved here two years ago from the vibrant town of Downers Grove, Illinois. Loved, I've owned property here my whole life, so it was great to be back. And one of the things I've been looking forward to is vibrancy and a growing community. And I just wondered, I come to these meetings every other month, just to keep my fingers abreast of what's going on. So, is there a way that I can understand what is being proposed for these business owners? So, I can understand better what they're saying, and is it limiting my opportunity to shop and invest in this community? Did I do something wrong?
No, it's, it's, it's my, my timer. See what you got?
This won't come out of your allotted time.
Turn it off, turn it off, sorry. Sorry.
I'm just sure if you heard, I just said, where could I get more information on, on this proposal? So, I'm a little bit better informed. I didn't know anything about this as a non-business owner, just because I want to make sure I have moved to a very vibrant, alive, full of business community.
This, this came out of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission discussed it. There were commissioners that were in favor of it, and ones that were opposed to it.
But what is?
It is basically a proposal. The, the letters that went out said that the, the Planning Commission is considering, considering, and they were asking for businesses' opinion of that decision. Okay? There is no plan, this all came about as a desire to get your opinions, and we're getting it.
I guess I'm not asking the right question.
Oh.
What, what is the?
Do you?
I don't know what the proposal, I don't know.
Different between retail.
I'm sorry. Okay, all right, then Phil give it to me on the technical, thank you, thank you.
If you wanna come across the hall afterwards, we can give you a copy of the letter.
Okay.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Jason Charmery, Lake Shore, the onyx one sixteen, West Colby, I'm a tenant. And I have had a practice in Whitehall since two thousand and ten. Initially, I rented space from Lloyd Lake Family Dentistry. Couple of years ago, was able to expand into our own site, and was, I am proud of being able to come and help the City of Whitehall and the patients in this area. Versus having to have them get in the car, drive to North Muskegon or Fremont, or somewhere else to pursue specialty dental care. So, you know, I didn't get the letter, I'm assuming it went to the owner of the building, Tom. But, you know, reading it and having it forwarded to me, the actual sentiment, you know, where if, if you didn't, if you aren't conforming, you know, it has a negative feeling when we want to come into the community and help and take care of patients. So, I don't have any other comments, other than I oppose.
Okay. Yes?
From Rav, Catchmark Technologies, we're part of the group that's streaming here. We move, many of you don't know, we have an office in Grand Rapids, that's where we started, on Alpine, right by WZZM, by the weather ball. I grew up here. One of the things that we wanted to do was expand towards the Lakeshore, cover Muskegon, cover the Lakeshore area. Our goals are Grand Haven to Luddington. One of the things that we considered when we came to the Lakeshore was where we were gonna set up shop. We had an opportunity, originally we set up a small office across from Walmart, in the township area. Worked with Severs and Vikings down there to, to get an office. When we grew, and we did, we had an opportunity to choose, and we looked at properties all over the county. Muskegon was probably the smartest choice for us, but I grew up here, right? And we had an opportunity in this community to give back to this community. And our mission and vision is to, to help people and solve problems and give back. So, we chose to help and solve problems and give back. And we found a property that, to my knowledge, had sat empty, and kind of an eyesore for a couple of years. I know there was some plans to develop that property, but that never happened and never fell through, or that all fell through. We went to work, we used local resources, Winberg and Brad helped us. We dumped about two hundred thousand dollars into the building that we're in right now. In turn, over time, we continued to give back. We provided free wifi for the back parking lot. We helped with the solar tables in the, in the common area. We helped with the, the mobile book center, provide internet and services for the library to provide that. We give back around town immensely. I'm both a property owner with one of my companies and a tenant. When this letter comes out, I think it makes it extremely difficult for people who are trying to give back. And it feels almost like you're being a little betrayed, in, in a sense. I think that it, it really scares you about the future. So, what do I mean by that? Well, someday I'm gonna stop working, right? And I'm gonna hand my business off to maybe somebody that buys it, or to maybe my family members. When I do that, if this goes through, I no longer can hand that business off to my family members, I have to move it. I have to upgrade, I have to change it. And lastly, if there was retail demand, that would organically happen. People would be coming to my business, they'd be offering me money for my building. I'd happily move out. I'd happily leave if it was gonna be something good for the community. I just don't see the demand. Like Ryan said, the, the space across the street, the space between chens. There, there's all kinds of retail available down by the expressway as well, not in the district, in the, in the proposed district, but it's just not there. So, if organically it comes, I don't think you'll have to zone to get rid of service businesses. The dollars will get rid of us. We'll go to someplace else and, and we'll do that. But for right now, it kinda seems like a bit of a slap in the face for businesses that are trying to give back, that are trying to make this community something better. And I do think, what, my last question is, what would that space that we occupy look like had we not moved in? Right? Our service-based business, what would that look like? Right now, today? So, that, I, I leave you with that question. Again, I don't doubt any of the intent of you guys, I think you're all honorable people, and you have the best interests of the city at mind. But I do think it's, it's important and a responsibility of citizens to, to speak their mind when they have an opportunity. So, I appreciate all you guys and what you do, and thank you for everybody that showed up.
Anyone else?
I'd most agree, no, Michelle Montgomery from Islands waterfront Grill. Also know that I'm opposed to this plan, based on all the reasons that these people have given you. It is kind of a slap in the face, people who spent their whole lives building this community and have been here servicing it. What gets me most is that there seems to be a real disconnect between what the city tries to go and do, and what everybody else, I think, wants to do. I don't know why that is. I don't think the city gets involved in the public enough to, to develop that relationship. But I think there's a real disconnect there that, that we have to look at. Other than that, I'll, I'll just talk briefly about something that I was asked to talk about, which was putting people downtown. In my college studies and things that I've watched, it would work over and over again, since the time I was in high school till now. If you go to Grand Haven, take an old factory, turn them into apartments, they have building condos, there's many other things, right close to their downtown area. Like Joe from Catchmark said, is, change will happen organically. You put those people down there, you got people on the street. If I don't have to get in my car and drive someplace, I can walk down the street, oh, I can eat here, I can buy my stuff here, I can do all my things here. It'll, it'll invigorate more restaurants, better restaurants, more retail, right? And you may get to a point where an insurance person or Catchmark says, "We don't wanna be here, it's too busy, it's all tourists, and it's not our traffic." It'll happen organically, naturally, people will move, right? But the city should be working on ways to, to help with all of that. And if, and if the people in the city don't want hotels and condos downtown, and don't wanna be Grand Haven, that's fine too. We have a great mix of businesses in the downtown area. You've got a little bit of everything, and it is relatively thriving. It's not a big metropolis, it's not Grand Haven, but you got great businesses down there. And, and in my opinion, as you're well aware of, it seems like over and over again, the city comes up with proposals that, that hurt businesses and not help. So, I, I would, I would hope that at some point we can get a little more cooperation.
Good evening, I'm Susan Martin, and I'm from Home Services of White Lake. The company that has the retail store that the name doesn't say what I sell there, that was one of the remarks that was made on Facebook. I don't get into playing games like that, I'm pretty sporting, when it knows me, you're gonna get the honest to God truth. My company started, my parents started, four generations. Home Services of White Lake was not a pool business at the time. I've been sitting in that building since nineteen seventy-six. And when we moved there, it wasn't, we moved from Montague to Whitehall, and it wasn't to sit as just a service company, which, yes, I'm a huge service company. But I wanted to expand in the retail. And I think you all know the changes that have happened over the years to the front of that building, and I continue to do with my new sign, even though Home Services doesn't really say what I do, but I am a retail store. And if you don't know what Home Services does, stop in, look and see the retail part of Home Services of White Lake. We do service, we have retail. And I agree with what these guys are saying about the community thrives on retail and on service. We need all those services, that's what the world hopes it go round and round. So, I thank you for your time, I'm opposed.
Anyone else? Yes?
My name's Bob Ingles. I'm a building owner and business owner, Okie Dokie. And I am opposed to this proposal. I think it's very short-sighted. It's trying to pick winners. I think that's more, as the gentleman spoke earlier, that that can happen generically, if the building blocks are there that support those types of businesses that we all would prefer to have in that area, to make it a bit brighter. Market will take care of that. Trouble is, we have, is that our current demographic doesn't support it. So, anything that the city can do in efforts, and the Planning Commission can do in efforts to, towards bringing in economic drivers that can bring money into the community, that can, can bring the traffic, that would support more retail. And more retail will come in, or, or more restaurants, or more. You don't have the economic engine to drive it, you can't bludgeon it into place by removing the things that you don't want. And it's, it's like the council, I mean, the Planning Commission seems to have a very short-sighted view that doesn't understand how business works. And so, I suppose, you know, the, the city has very limited tools, you know, you, limited incentives, different incentive things you could do by law. You're limited to, you know, your big tools, okay, so only that is a big tool. That's a hammer, that's a hammer. And I guess if all you have is a hammer, everything starts to look like a nail, but it's not the right tool for this problem. And, you know, I don't, I don't understand, to start off with, what problem they think they're solving with restricting the use of businesses. You're taking away all the equity that a longstanding person has built up in their business by making what their business has been now a non-conforming thing, and it cannot be sold. That person can't be sold on to another, another person. So, you've destroyed, what this would do, would destroy all the equity that person's built up. If they're relying on that for their retirement when they get out, that's dead wrong. So, those are my few points, and like I say, I'm, I'm strongly opposed to that proposal.
Okay?
Neil and Amy from Big John's Pizza. And just appreciate you guys gave us the opportunity to come up here and talk and share our feelings, and we're both opposed as well. Our type of business isn't directly effective, per se, but I see a lot of customers, from the folks behind me, and businesses that generate customers, that come in, they come in for a dentist appointment or chiropractor appointment, from out of town, you know? Folks from out of town coming into these appointments. And we see it in the summertime, people may get around, going to Pittkins and Posh and, and various other businesses. So, I think that will restrict, in the big picture of things, that business value for those that might not. for those that might not be in that scope of that proposal.
I just know that we all need each other to make everything go around. It was the same back in COVID times because we all had to, you know, kind of cuddle together as businesses to stay open. Some of us could, but again, we had to, we had to really come together. And I know that losing anybody really affects the community as a whole, whether it's Whitehall or Montague. So I just, again, I really want to support, we're here to support them because I know we're not directly affected. But we do need them. We need all of them. We need all of them to make it all work.
And I just want to add to that. During the COVID, um, the small businesses in the community really drew together. The restaurant community, the small business restaurant community really drew together to, to help each other out, um, and some retail as well. So I'm just, uh, very proud of that, and I'd just like to see the, the logistics of the city continue to go in that direction, that hometown and that family valued, uh, atmosphere, um, that we have. Thank you again for sharing.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to old business. Is there any old business, Scott?
There is not this evening, Your Honor.
All right. Next is new business. First up is Feet on the Street. Would you like to, uh, inform us of that?
Sure. Uh, this will be the second annual. I don't know if you can call it annual when it's the second. I think there's some sort of protocol there, but, uh, there was a Feet on the Street, which was, um, a follow-up to back when Kobe Street was closed, and we had a little celebration. And I think it was, uh, quite a success. There was a lot of organizations that came together. And the chamber is asking permission to do it once again on June fourth in the North Mears Promenade.
So, we need a motion to approve that?
Moved.
Seconded.
Did you get that?
Yes, I did.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion?
Uh, just one question, Scott. Uh, we talked about the North Mears Promenade for this. It, they are not going to shut down Kobe again. I mean, I know that's what we did the first time. You know, we did it before Kobe was open. But, uh, so it would, it'll just be back in the promenade.
Yeah, initially there, for last year's event, there was some discussion about that, but it was felt that, let's just move it into the parking lot. A little more, a little easier logistically.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Do we need a roll call on that, Brenda? All those in favor, say yes.
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 Those who say no, Feet on the Street moves forward. Next is Tag Day Request. Whitehall Band Boosters. Anyone?
I'll make a motion and, uh, let the, uh, Whitehall Band Boosters have a tag day on Saturday, May thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those who say no, Tag Day goes forward. Next is Ordinance twenty-three oh-one, Rental Property. Scott, would you, uh, inform us of this?
Certainly. Um, this is an amendment to the current rental, rental, um, inspection ordinance. Uh, the first paragraph, we're clarifying that non-owner occupied units would be subject to, uh, the registration and the inspections, where currently it says occupied by persons other than the owner, excuse me, and the owner's immediate family. And the second paragraph is to remove short-term rental units, um, with a duration of less than thirty consecutive days so that we can, um, actually expand. And I think the focus there is that Airbnbs and BnBs and RVBOs, um, would be subject to rental inspections as well.
Okay. Do we have a?
Make a motion to accept twenty-three oh-one as written. Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any, any discussion? I believe we need a roll call.
Brown?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Sigga?
Yes.
Heidelberg?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Malali?
No.
Salter?
Yes. Ordinance twenty-three oh-one is approved. Next, Resolution twenty-three oh-three, Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
We'll move Resolution twenty-three oh-three, the two thousand and twenty-three Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the city of Whitehall.
Seconded.
And moved in seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to go on the record as I've said before that, uh, I'm not in favor of any investments on the city's behalf with taxpayers' dollars into any of the parks that we currently have or parks that might be proposed for the future. I don't think we have the funds or the people to maintain the ones that we have right now properly. We sure don't need to be adding to any of them. That's just my personal feelings, but I just want it on public record.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Sigga?
Yes.
Heidelberg?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Malali?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes. Twenty-three oh-three Master Plan has been approved. Resolution twenty-three oh-four, Property Exemption. This is, uh, something we do every year, I believe. I think that we're all familiar with this.
I'm over to accept Resolution twenty-three oh-four, Property Exemptions, Poverty Exemptions.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Connell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Heidelberg?
Yes.
Sigga?
Yes.
Malali?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes. Twenty-three oh-four is approved. Next, Resolution twenty-three oh-five, Residents' Right to Protest.
I'll move Res- Resolution twenty-three dash zero five, Residents' Right to Protest.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sigga?
Yes.
Malali?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Heidelberg?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes. Twenty-three oh-five is approved. Next is Resolution twenty-three oh-six, Board of Review.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, the dates and times here for the, uh, the Board of Review as presented.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Malali?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Heidelberg?
Yes.
Sigga?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three oh-six is approved. Resolution twenty-three oh-seven, Senior Millage.
I'll move to accept Resolution twenty-three oh-seven, Senior Millage.
Seconded.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any way of knowing what the other communities in the White Lake area are doing as far as possibly donating some of their senior millage money that they get to the school?
Yeah, I did, uh, excuse me, I did not have exact numbers, but Tom Moore, the, um, Director of White Lake Area Community that oversees the back and the senior services, did indicate that White River, Fruitland, Blue Lake, and Whitehall, I'm going to back one of them out, White River, Blue Lake, and Whitehall Township are, are all contributing. He said it ranges between eight and eleven thousand dollars, which, um, based upon their allocation, uh, looks to be, you know, eighty to ninety percent. I think that was included in the council packet. Fruitland is also contributing, but they're going to use ARPA money, uh, for their contribution. So those four, uh, are all contributing. And I do know that, um, just some statistics, there's seven hundred and sixty, uh, registered seniors at the Viking Athletics Center. Two hundred and eighty-five are, uh, city of Whitehall residents, so we're almost forty percent of the registered, um, seniors out there. There's been just over two thousand visits since September first by our two hundred and eighty-five residents. And our contribution allows the participation free charge, which actually, in a sense, brings it down to, you know, if you divide our contribution by the number of, um, registered seniors, that's forty-three dollars a year based on a hundred and fifty-dollar set annual fee. So, our contribution is actually about one-third of the actual cost. So it's a, it's a great benefit for our seniors, obviously free, um, and, uh, return on investment for the city, forty-three dollars versus a hundred and fifty. So I think some communities discussed just reimbursing, um, any residents, but if we did it, if we did it that way, um, it'd be three times as expensive.
Cost us a whole bunch more money.
Yep. And I do know, uh, Commissioner Seer, who I think is in the audience, um, has given us his endorsement, which is required as part of the application to the Health Department for the senior millage allocation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Connell?
Yes.
Sigga?
Yes.
Heidelberg?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Malali?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution twenty-three oh-seven is approved. Next up is, uh, public comment again. Anyone else like to make a further comment? Yes.
We'll be on planning, square. Feet on the Street, so glad to see you approve that. That is just what the city needs. We want a vibrant downtown, more events downtown. We had that band thing last year that was in Montague and Whitehall.
Walk the Beat.
Or Walk the Beat.
Walk the Beat.
I attended that. I was at the Playhouse and I walked all the way to Montague. Vibrancy, more and more of that. Pick and Drug really didn't benefit from any of that, but other places did, and the community did, and it showed off the community and brought people downtown. So those type of events, great ideas, both of them great ideas. Hope, hope that Walk the Beat happens again. I don't know what time to schedule, but.
It is.
It has, more, more events downtown, vibrancy. Thanks.
Mark your calendar, July twenty-second.
And they're looking for sponsors.
And they're looking for sponsors. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say that all the people that, you know, spoke about the questionnaire, make sure you come again and speak at the Planning Commission meeting, so, if you're able, to, you know, so they know your opinion. All of us up here aren't on the Planning Commission, so, I mean, it's.
I'm on the Planning Commission.
I know you are, but.
I am also. As is Jeff.
You know, all of us are not, so.
Right. It's February seventh. Yes. Yes. What's that?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I would just like to say that a lot of people, I get the impression from a lot of the people talking that they think that the city is in favor of this. That's not necessarily the case. Uh, it came from a few people that had an idea, apparently in the Planning Commission, and it's not necessarily endorsed by the city. So it's, it's like, like they said, it's a questionnaire, and, and it's probably sounded a little vindictive if, in a way, so. But anyway, just wanted to let that be known.
Well, yes, the, uh, the letter did get the community out. We are a community. I'm glad that the people of this community chose to come out and make their voice heard. So oftentimes, we sit in a council meeting with no public here. So I'm grateful and glad to hear your opinions. This is a, it's a good discussion, and it's been civil. Thank you for that. The, the city's here to, to serve its residents, and we're listening, and we want to do what's best for the city. That's our job.
What time is the Planning Commission meeting at? Time of the day?
Time of the day is six o'clock. Six o'clock.
Thank you.
Six o'clock, February seventh, here.
I think most of the people spoke their piece here for a lot of them. I, I don't think I can be at the Planning Commission. A lot of these people can't. That's why they jumped in here, so they, they don't want to repeat themselves. You, you get to drill.
I, I hope everyone has a better idea of what's going on, that they feel better about this, that they're not so up in arms.
Mayor, all of the surveys that were returned, as well as some email comments, uh, will obviously be forwarded to the Planning Commission, and we'll make the minutes from tonight's meeting available to the Planning Commission as well.
With that, we're adjourned. We didn't have any students.